Welcome to the October 28th, 2024, Twelton City Council meeting. We'd like to start our meeting, I'll call this meeting to order, and then we'd like to ask Councilor Brooks to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have one proclamation tonight, and that is a proclamation declaring November 2024, 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Twelton, and Councilor Brooks will be reading this proclamation.
Thank you, Council President Pratt. Whereas the history and culture of our nation has been significantly influenced by Native Americans and Indigenous peoples, and whereas the city of Twelton recognizes the unique and enduring relationship that exists between Indigenous peoples and their traditional territories and the area currently known as Washington County, Oregon rests on land that was first inhabited by the Aftaladi Kalapuyans, also called the Twelton people, who flourished here for thousands of years, and whereas Oregon is home to nine federally recognized tribal nations, including the Burns Paiute, the Confederated Tribes of Kuzlor Umquah and Susla Indians, Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde, Confederated Tribes of Siletz, Confederated Tribes of Umatilla Reservation, Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs, Cow Creek Band of Umquah Indians, Coquille Indian Tribe, and the Klamath Tribes, and whereas equity is a priority for the city of Twelton in ensuring that Native Americans are front and center in our efforts to improve opportunities and outcomes for Native American families, communities, and businesses, and whereas meaningful engagement centers the lived experience of Native Americans in Oregon so that, so as to provide equitable access to the city's services and development, infrastructure, and program investments, and whereas the city of Twelton is committed to engaging with tribal nations and tribal communities to build relationships and address issues affecting their well-being, and whereas during the month of November, we honor the Native peoples in this, their ancestral homes, and recognize their continued contribution to all areas of community and family life, arts, and culture. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Twelton, Oregon, that November 2024 is Native American Heritage Month, introduced and adopted this 28th day of October 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks.
It's a privilege.
Now, we move on to public comment, and this is where anyone can address the council on an issue that's not on our agenda tonight. Do we have anybody online? Okay, I have a slip here for Emma Gray.
Thank you, Councilor President Pratt and council members. My name is Emma Gray. I'm the current Chair of T-Park, the Twelton Parks Advisory Committee, and I'm here on behalf of myself, our Vice Chair Beth Dittman, who couldn't be here tonight, and all of our members, to publicly acknowledge and thank our departing Parks Director Ross Hoover. I have had the privilege and the honor of working with Ross as a member of T-Park, and his leadership, his professionalism, his dedication, and his passion for improving the quality of life for residents in Twelton is really unmatched. Over and over, as you all know, our citizens, our residents, have shared how important a vibrant park system is to our community, and I'm really proud of the improvements, the stewardship, and the growth of that system that we've seen during Ross's tenure. Thank you. Thank you. I also want to specifically highlight two achievements that were made possible through the leadership of this council and under Ross's leadership. That would not have happened, I believe, without his perseverance and his true dedication. There are many more I could mention, but I want to highlight the utility fee that helps us address the really massive problem of deferred maintenance in our park system and our parks bond. Before these two initiatives, particularly the utility fee, you all know probably even better than I do, we did not have the benefit of a dedicated, long-term funding stream for our parks, even though it was such an important priority for our residents. And now we do, and it's not enough. We know that the utility fee only addresses a very small percentage of the huge deferred maintenance we have in our system, but it is such an improvement. And quite frankly, these initiatives that we enjoy under Ross's leadership will change the landscape positively of this community for generations. So I want to thank him from the bottom of our hearts. I want to reinforce how important those initiatives have been and how valuable his leadership has been to our community, and urge this council to continue to support those initiatives which you already have been so supportive of because they are so important to our residents, and we love our parks. Thank you for allowing me this time, and we will miss Ross a lot. Thank you.
Thanks, Emma. Do you want to say something, Councilor Sacco?
Thank you. Thank you. I wish they'd give me five minutes or seven minutes.
Thanks, Emma, and thank you, Ross. Ross came in when we were in the middle of our Parks Master Plan, and he was well-needed in so many of the changes that have occurred the last five, well, six years, have you been here? And like Emma said, the future of our parks is much in part thanks to Ross. Let's move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda, and it'll be enacted in one vote. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda tonight? All right. There are four items tonight. First, consideration of approval of the special meeting minutes of September 30th, 2024, and the work session and regular meeting minutes of October 14th, 2024. Second, consideration of resolutions number 5814-24, 5815-24, 5816-24, accepting grant funds for traffic safety enforcement through Oregon Department of Transportation. Third, consideration of resolution number 5817-24, adopting the city of Twelton investment policy. Fourth, consideration of resolution number 5818-24, authorizing the First Amendment to the agreement between the city of Twelton and Randall and Karen Albstad for management and operations of Basalt Creek Parkland.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Right, this has been moved to seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Special reports. This has a time limit, Don.
What, about 30 seconds, I hope? I would be more than happy to have it be a time limit of a very short amount of time. Thank you, Council President Pratt and members of the City Council. I'm getting this look. Wait.
I'm sorry, I was surprised that Ross was leaving because on a previous call with Sherilyn, she had mentioned that there would be time today to discuss how we're moving forward and talk about lessons learned from Ross. So I thought, I guess, it was going to be incorporated into some discussion somewhere, and anyway, that's why I gave a surprise look. Not about you.
Okay, I'm not aware of that myself, so I'll take that up to the council.
I'm sure that's true. Thank you.
So, Council President Pratt and members of the council, I'm Don Hudson. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, and I'm here to give our quarterly financial report for the first quarter of fiscal year '25, and it looks like Bates is flopping through my presentation. So our agenda tonight, I'll talk about the budget-to-actual comparison for fiscal year '25 first quarter as it compares to our fiscal year, first quarter of fiscal year '24. I will give some highlights of our quarterly investment report. I handed a copy of that out to you. That's the full version, and so because it crosses some pages, I have kind of a shorter version as a slide, so there's the full version for you. I'll give you the update on our annual audit, our independent audit, that is actually, we have our auditors in our offices starting today, so I'll give you a little bit of update on that. Give you an update on the ARPA projects to date and kind of where things stand with that. Want to give you an update also tonight on the utility bill assistance program that you created last, or earlier this calendar year, so we got some, I think, some exciting numbers on that. So as we get into the budget and actual comparison, you'll see, starting with the general fund, that we're trending the same as last year. The revenues are down, or you see that we have a low percentage of general fund revenues received, and that's because of the timing of the property taxes. Property tax is one of our largest sources of revenue in the general fund, and we don't start receiving those until the end of November, first part of December. But I do have the information on how our assessed value increased this year. So we budgeted 3% increase in our assessed value. Across both counties, it came in at 3.83%, which is approximately $100,000 over what we have budgeted in general fund revenues. So we're excited about that increase and what that means going forward. As we get into the building fund, you'll see that the revenues are up significantly, and that's the high development activity, including autumn sunrise and then some of the work that's going on over at Lamb Research, and then some other development activity. So the timing of when all that happens, we've seen the revenue coming in this year, so that's very positive for that fund and where the position of that fund is. On the expenditure side, you'll see that we're trending a little low compared to last year. There's two reasons for that. One is the, we have some staff vacancies in the timing of when we're filling those, and so that's on our personal services expenditures, those are less than last year, as well as the merchant discount fees, and that's the fees that we are charged for people, for accepting credit cards. It's still a very high number, but we are seeing it lower than what we saw in the first quarter of last year. I don't necessarily think that it's fully that less people are using credit cards, but some of the amounts that they're charging on the credit cards are lower. So if we have somebody come in, they have a large number, a large dollar amount of SDCs or things like that, and they put it on a credit card, that's a big charge for us. So I think we're seeing a little bit lower volume there, but I still think we're going to end up around budget on that, but compared to last fiscal year, we're trending a little low on that side as well. In the road utility fee fund, you'll see the revenues, the actual revenues are lower than last year, and the big part of this is the timing of the vehicle license fees that we get from Washington County and from Clackamas County. Those fees are received in our road operating fund and then transferred into the road utility fund to be used as part of our pavement management, or pavement maintenance program. So that's a transfer in, and that's one of the revenues, so we haven't had that transfer happen yet, and that's the big change from fiscal year, the first quarter fiscal year '24. The expenditure side in the road utility fund is based upon the timing and scope of our pavement maintenance program. If you were to look at our budget this year, we have budgeted less in the pavement maintenance program just based upon the streets and the work that is being done. It's a kind of a low year on that cycle. So, and also we have timings related to the pavement maintenance program, things that might happen at the beginning of the fiscal year, some things happen later, kind of in June, so it's the timing, but mostly it's the scope of our pavement maintenance program this year is why those numbers are less. In the road operating fund, you'll see that the percentage-wise, we are trending very similar. The expenditures are low again due to that vehicle license fee because it's a transfer out, which is in the expenditure grouping, and because we haven't done that transfer yet, that number's low this year compared to last. On all our utility funds, easy for me to say, our water, our sewer, and our stormwater, you'll see that the percentage trends are pretty similar. The increase in revenue, when you actually look at the actual dollars, that's our rate increases in each of those funds, and so that's why you'll see the dollars are up, but the percentages are trending pretty close or similar to each other. On the expenditure side, in the water operating fund, you'll see that we are percentage-wise and dollar-wise lower in the first quarter of this fiscal year compared to last. That again is mostly due to projects. It's the scope and quantity of the water projects that are happening, and so we've got less going out and maybe some smaller projects this year than we were paying in the first quarter last year, so that you'll see in future presentations that water operating fund, mostly water and then even the sewer, because of project timing, you'll see that it won't be fully consistent year to year, and when we talk about it in the budget process and we talk about the, you see the budgets and the amount of projects we're doing in a year, you'll see these trends at that point. So now to get into our quarterly investment report, I'm going to have to utilize my notes a little bit more here because I can't read that there, and it's even a little bit harder to read for me here, so I apologize for looking down more than I prefer to do. We invest, we have invested about $94 million of idle funds. A big chunk of this is our parks bond funds, but as well as other funds across, and these are our water funds, our general fund, it's across all our funds. You'll see in the center graph there, that's our maturity at policy level, so it's the maturities and when our investments are maturing and what percentage of our investments and the dollars that we have in those categories of zero to 12 months, which is primarily the funds that are in the state, the local government investment pool. Those are our funds that are very accessible to us. We have some maturities that are coming in that are outside the state pool that are in that zero to 12, but the majority of the amounts you see here, and it's about just under 15% that are in the state pool, most of those go out for future years, and you'll see that about 30%, about a third of our maturities are out in the one to three-year range, and then just under 25% in the three to five-year range. Our strategy is to spread these out over five years in, you know, different times when we think we're going to need money. So we look at also, like on the bond funds, we work with the Parks and Rec Department to identify when those funds need to be available, and then we invest out to have those maturities coming in so that we can get, we can maximize our returns, our investment returns for the parks projects by not having money just sitting around and waiting to be spent. So we really do a job of strategizing when those come in, but I'll talk a little bit about that more in a second. If you, the third bullet point there is showing how much of our, that three-quarters of our investments are in AAA or AA or AAA investments. There are some lower levels that match into our policy. We have certain levels that we cannot invest under the quality investments, but the fact that at 75% in the AA and AAA, we are investing in very high-quality investments as well. And all our investments are compliant with the policy that you passed this evening. Obviously, we don't want to be non-compliant, but that is something that our investment advisors also look at to make sure that all the different levels of compliance are being met. I'll have, I will say that when I first ran this report, this is a report we get from our investment advisors on their system, that little box said "non-compliant," and I went, "What?" We have a strategy, we work with a strategy with them every year to talk about how many, how much we want to have just in, say, in the state pool, so for very liquid, and then how much we want to invest out. We are right now, under our liquidity strategy, because of the interest rate environment, we have less liquidity, we've invested more, so that their system initially called because we are not compliant with our strategy as a non-compliance of policy. I made sure they changed their report because I didn't want the council looking at me and going, "Why are we not compliant with our policy?" Our total book yield for this quarter is just under 4.2%. So as you look at that graph on the right-hand side, that is the percentage, or the yield, and I know it's hard to read up on the screen, I apologize for that, it is our yield for our parks bond money, what we call our core investments, and then the middle bar there is, oh no, I'll take that back, that's our, I can't, apologies, I can't read it either. The core is the middle one, the gray, is the parks bond, and the blue is the LGIP. You can see that our state pool, the LGIP, is at a higher rate than a lot of our other investments. The pool is starting to, their yield is starting to drop, and we knew that would happen as their strategies and their investments are coming in at the lower rates. It's 5.25, I think, or 5.3 on there on October 2nd, so right after this was put together, they dropped to 5.15%, and last week they dropped to 5. So even though we had investments there, they were there higher, we were turning around our investments that were maturing at lower rates and investing them out at higher. As the pool starts dropping, you'll start seeing our yield staying higher than in the pool eventually at some point, or is projected to drop lower than that. So that ties in with our whole strategy of our investment policy. And as I mentioned before, we have about 16.5% that is in the state pool. We'll start seeing that shift a little bit higher, as we're not able to get also investments at the higher rates, we may park some in that pool for shorter terms as we strategize around the rate environment. As I mentioned, we are, we have our independent auditors, Singer-Lewak, you've received correspondence from them in the past, and I can tell you will get another correspondence when we finish our audit. It's got to be done by the end of, or end of December. Once that's done, they will communicate out with you as well as kind of what's the, you know, what they found, and if there's anything, and usually it's a very good thing that we worked really well with them and our financial position looks very strong. I will give you the heads-up when they, this last year, they communicated directly with you, which is fine, I like to, we asked them to give us a heads-up so that we can give you a heads-up that this is coming, so when you get it, you know what it is. The annual comprehensive financial report has, will be issued before December 31st of 2024, and again, when that happens, you'll receive the communication. Our financial report, the ACFA, as it's called, is submitted to the Government Finance Officers' Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. The fiscal year 2022 audit, or ACFA, was awarded that award for the 32nd consecutive year. The fiscal year '23 ACFA is still in review, and we anticipate that we will hit the 33rd consecutive year on that, and when this ACFA is completed, we will submit it to that program as well. ARPA. So let's talk a little bit about our funds. If you recall, we got about $6.2 million in funds. The state, the program allowed for what's called revenue replacement up to $10 million, and basically what that does is when you qualify under that, then it defederalizes those dollars, and so we have, we have done that, and we are then, it kind of takes away a lot of the restrictions that are in the program. What we have done with that, so we have, we have taken that up to $10 million, so our $6.2 in revenue replacement and are reporting with the federal government. We have maintained, as the projects we're doing, we have maintained within those guidelines of ARPA so that the intent of the program is what we're using the dollars for. The, one of the advantages to it is then we're not fully restricted to the December 31st, 2024, of having it, the word I'm looking for, having, under contract and so forth, the word I'm missing, but we will continue to utilize the funds for the proper purposes. What we have been using it for so far is the, some progress projects, completed or in-progress projects you see up there, the water line that's servicing the affordable housing, the SEPA project, Flambette Gardens, they needed to have a water line put in, and so we gave up to $1 million for the water line to service that project. There is that trail project that's right adjacent to it, that's, Parks and Rec is working on that, they've got some preliminary design on it, but we'll be utilizing funds for that project as well. We've also been doing a number of ADA improvements with the money, so the new library doors, the sliding doors, that was utilized, ARPA for that. We also did not have ADA doors at the entrance to the city offices, nor the police department, so we've utilized ARPA funds to get those in place as well. There are some projects at the police department, some other ADA-related projects that we have a federal earmark application in, we're waiting to hear on that. If that does not come through, then we'll be able to utilize some ARPA funds for things like the, there's some entrance issues that we've identified and are looking to fund, so if it doesn't come through in the earmark, we will utilize ARPA funds to do that project as well. The big use of ARPA funds is the Las Casitas Park renovation. We're very excited about that project, we think this is a very exciting use of ARPA funds. That project is getting ready to go out to bid, so once that goes out to bid and we finish that project, then we'll know if we have any other funds available. One of the other pieces we have used is, and I'll talk about the assistance program, the bill, utility bill assistance program, and I'll give you some numbers in a second, but we were able to, for those accounts that qualified, we were able to give us additional assistance beyond what our program says, utilizing ARPA funds to get those qualified customers kind of back to square one and hopefully get them in a good place. So speaking of utility bill assistance, you recall that we created this program, the council, thank you very much, created this program back in December of 2023. We signed an agreement with Community Action to do the qualifications for us. Their, the qualifications are 60% of annual median income or people that qualify for other programs such as the SNAP program, the Women, Infants, and Children program, temporary assistance for needy families, the Oregon Health Plan, free and reduced lunch, energy assistance programs, which Community Action qualifies people for as well, or public housing, Section 8 Choice Voucher Program, or project-based voucher programs. So if they're at that median level or already qualified for one of those programs, they qualify for assistance through our program. We did a large amount of communication for this program. We did it in the city newsletter, it was on our website, we did social media posts. There was an article, and we placed an ad, and they also did an added article in Twelton Life about the program. We did a flyer in our utility bills, as well as Community Action staff, when they're talking to people, if someone comes to them for rent assistance or energy assistance, they say, "By the way, do you know Twelton has a utility bill assistance program?" Our staff, when people called in, we let people know the program. So there was a large amount of communication that was done when this program was created. The eligible, once someone is qualified, the policy, the program is $300 per fiscal year. If someone qualifies, they, we put $300 on their account, that all that time may be $150, so then they have $150 credit to continue on up to that $300 per fiscal year. So that's why when you see these numbers... So that's why when you see these numbers, you would think $300 a year, why isn't it $600 or $900 as dollars and cents? That's the amount that we have actually applied to a balance. In the fiscal year '24, so in about six months' worth, we had 34 accounts for a total of $23,000 that assistance. And again, that difference there was the ARPA funds that we were able to, could basically zero people's accounts out with, under these, if they qualified. To date, since July, we have, we've had 21 accounts qualify for over $7,000. Every week, we're seeming to get one or two more accounts qualified. We're very excited about the assistance we've been able to provide for the people who need it. At that, I will be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
I was waiting for something cute for me.
After listening to me stand up, sit up here and talk, I thought you have to have something that was a little bit better than just staring at me.
So any questions for Dawn? Chris, or Counselor Sock, sorry.
Just a quick question on the utility assistance. So when they qualify, is this something that we are, and I heard, I heard all the great outreach that we're doing, but is this something that when, because obviously if there's like a non-payment or delayed payment, and is there a way for us to see that they qualify? Is that when you reach out? Or is it, we have, like, or do they have to reach out to us? I guess if we can see like they're delinquent or they possibly need assistance? I'm just kind of confused on how we make sure that people don't slip through the cracks.
So my staff right now, so we send out delinquent notices, and so people know kind of when, when they're delinquent. But before we do a shut-off, when we get the shut-off list, my staff goes and contacts either by email, mostly phone calls, calls people and talks to them. And Kathy Hayes is our staff person that does that, and she has a pretty good feel for the people, will mention it if they, if they say they're having, they need some assistance. We get a lot of phone calls too of people saying, hey, I have this bill, I need some assistance, and we point them. But staff does a fair amount of communication with people on an ongoing basis and lets them know about the program if they think they'll qualify.
Counselor Brooks? One, just random question, when it talked about sales on the activity summary.
Are you talking on the investment?
Yeah, it's on the right in the middle.
So those are our maturities, and so we're, this is selling the maturity back.
Okay. And my other question is, you said a lot of the money was the parks, parks bond money, and I was just curious where we started at and what, where it is.
When you say where it is, it...
The amount that it is right now, and, you know, is it, is it invested the same way as the rest of the money, or does it have different, is there a way of telling where it is in this?
So the majority of our investments in the parks bond right now are on shorter-term investments. That's why you see the pool and that, it's not in the pool, but we're investing them at two to three-month windows because we've been trying to identify the timing of some of the dollars that we currently have. And unfortunately, I don't have the exact dollar amount in front of me of what's in our, in that investments right now. But we are, those are mostly in short term because of the timing, and we're still trying to identify those.
And I guess too, part of my question is, I just have curiosity around how much matching grants we got. I just, I'm wondering if, if there could be like a more detailed illumination on the parks funding and specifically how the investments are, the bonds, what grants got matched, the assets that we bought, things like that.
I can put that together in future presentations if you'd like.
Yeah, or even just send it and...
Okay. I know that we do not, that we have not used, and Ross is still here? No, he left. He got tired of hearing me talk to. I don't believe we have any grants that we've used bond funds to do matching, all the, and I don't think any of the projects that have been the bond projects to date have any grants related to them. The trail projects, some of the trail projects that are not part of, like the Trail Under 99 was not a bond project, was all under grants. I don't think there's any, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that there's any grants right now that are on a bond project that we are looking for some, but I don't believe there's any currently.
Okay.
But I can look at and put something together for you guys.
Yeah, thanks. Okay.
Oh.
Yeah, here we go. So I'm trying to understand, how much do we get total in ARPA funds?
6.2 million.
6.2. So we've done the Plan B, Gardens, so I, I'm sure that money's invested to mature when you need it, but, so what, so as you spend that down on these various projects, will the remainder just set in that utility fee fund, or will it depend on how much is left after all the other projects that have been identified?
Of the, of the ARPA dollars? We have a separate fund, a separate ARPA fund, so we'll keep that fund open until those dollars are gone.
Okay. My concern is that that utility assistance, there won't be funds for that in the future, we'll have to find another source.
Well, we have, so I probably should have mentioned how the utility assistance program is being funded. It is, you pass in the budget funds at all our utility funds towards the investment or to that. Those, those budget dollars have been more than sufficient to cover the assistance program. We supplemented last fiscal year any accounts that qualified with ARPA dollars. So we were able to identify that, and then we're charging the different utility funds for their share of the assistance, about $300.
Okay. And then, I hope you give me this liberty, but back on the investment policy we just passed? I'm just curious why the maximum maturity on investments, what, five and a quarter years, and then the portfolio average has to be two and a half years, like why it's not lettered out to 10 years or something of that sort?
So we're restricted by a state statute of how long we can invest out to.
Okay. It's just less than I'm used to, so.
The states are like, or the local government investment pool, then that's why, and PERS, the way those are structured, they have, they have the ability under statute to go out longer than five years. But local government, we're restricted to five years, and that's when we put our policy together. Yeah, the 5.25, there's a nuance to that, but it's statutory.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Dawn.
Went longer than you thought, but...
You did pretty well.
I was waiting for it to beep, to buzz me.
All right, next is general business. We have consideration of recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. I believe Maria was going to speak.
Counselor Reyes, excuse me. So we met this October, I think it was the 15th of October, and we interview candidates for the Library Advisory Committee and the IDEA Advisory Committee. And we are very, we always talk about how proud our community is, and we are very proud of you all. So thank you so much for taking your time to come and meet with us, and, and we get to learn a little bit about you, you get to learn a little bit about us, and I'm very, very, very proud for, for our community and the people that really are willing to support and volunteer and make a difference. So we were able to interview several candidates, but like always, we regret not to assign everyone, but if you are interested, there's always opportunities out there to volunteer in many other areas in our community. So thank you very much. I have Counselor Sock go talk about the candidates that we selected.
Thank you. Yes, we interviewed some great individuals, and we are excited and proud that we put before you, counsel. Rachel Elliott for the Library Advisory Committee with a term expiring 10/31/27. Nestor Sanchez for the Library Advisory Committee, the student position that is expiring 10/31/25. And then Sunny Armstrong for the IDEA Advisory Committee, term expiring 11/1/26. So with that, I would like to make a motion to, do I have to officially make a motion to consideration the recommendations for the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we need to do a name call on this?
You do not have to, Council President, you do not have to do a real call, voice vote is appropriate.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, we had no items removed from consent agenda. Any additional council communications? Counselor Hillier?
I just had one that I believe that today is First Responders Day, and so I'd like to say happy First Responders Day, and a special thank you to our officers and our fire department and other first responders in our community. We recognize you and we appreciate you.
All right, next, if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second it?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.